Yes.
Yeah.
meeting with the Select Board. Would you like to have the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Against the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just for all.
Tonight, we're going to look at an application of Joshua Levine. Mr. Levine, could you please go to the front desk and for the record, give your full name and your address?
Good evening, my name is Joshua Levine, my address is 78 Farmington Avenue.
We've all seen your application. I think perhaps it might be good to just introduce the various members of the Planning Board to my left.
Candela.
Bruce Colton.
Walter Gunn.
And myself, Don Holland. And to our right, we have Marie Angelitas, Richard Foster. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for applying. Would anyone like to lead off with a question?
Well, actually, should we ask if he wants to make a statement or anything?
Sure. Would you like to make a statement?
Thank you for having me and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and decided for the opportunity to join the Planning Board.
Lead off of a question. Connection with the CVS building that was built in town. There was a traffic study, traffic impact study. And that was done by independent group. Why do you think it was important for it to be independent?
Independent as in not the town, the DPW?
Or not CVS, or not hired to CVS.
Sure. To avoid any conflicts of interest, any appearance of impropriety in any way that CVS or someone from town is able to influence the findings to prevent the business from coming in or to have particular say in how the traffic is made to flow around there. I know it's a, it can be a difficult place in town, I occasionally see people coming the wrong way around the rotary, but independence is of course important for, so CVS does not have undue influence. If you're paying somebody to do a study, they may feel beholden to you whether they are or not, so I think independence is important there.
Thank you. Who has the next question?
Oh, I, well, I have a question. I'm Bruce Colton. I've, actually, I've been on the Planning Board almost as long as you've been alive. And I, one of the, actually, issues that you addressed in your, in your application letter or was conflicts of interest. We have, obviously, you're an attorney and, well, I'm an attorney, Mr. Holland is an attorney. In fact, the person who's place in the board you'd be taking is an attorney. It's probably the most common type of person who gets on the board, although certainly not, not everybody. However, in the, actually, the decades I've been on the Planning Board, we've had numerous attorneys on the board, but I believe you would be the first attorney on the board who represents developers as, as part of your business. I don't know if it, it's one of three areas that you mentioned in your, in the material you submitted. Would you agree that if any current, well, obviously, if any current clients of your firm appeared before us, you would need to recuse yourself, but if, if any former clients of your firm appeared before us, would you, would you also plan on recusing yourself?
I would, for the same reasons I about the independent review. Very important that people in town don't think anything untoward is happening and whether I, it's, I've been in town two years, so most former clients are, I don't really have a lot of former clients, mostly current. But I spoke with the rest of the firm, there's only two of us, myself and my father, so we, this is one of the early conversations we had and it's been many years, just as a quirk of how the practice has gone, that haven't really been in front of Long Meadow, but if it, it did come up, if it was somebody that had a client 10, 15 years ago that we've done other development work for in other planning boards, I think it would be prudent to recuse myself.
Oh, good, good. I also saw that you were, I guess, an English major at George Washington.
Right.
I, I didn't go there, but George Washington was one of the schools I was accepted at and I was, I guess, a history and an English major, so that's, that's good.
And we both ended up attorneys.
Yes, yes. I have no other, I certainly don't question your superb qualifications for the board. The one, the one thing I wanted to just nail down was, was the conflict of interest.
That's an important question.
Yep.
Lotte, do you have a question?
Yeah, first of all, yeah, I'm impressed that you are familiar with zoning bylaws and subdivision laws, et cetera, et cetera, because from my experience, it takes years to bring planning board members up to speed on land use laws. Your father, we know that well, in East Long Meadow, that's, it takes forever to get a skill set of knowledge, that's why I'm appreciative of people like Bruce who've been on the board for so many years, because we have the continuity, the understanding and the comprehension of what goes on. I feel that you're a relatively newcomer here, I don't see the conflicts, I think you would be an excellent addition to the Planning Board and looking at your work in, in Washington, DC is completely sort of different.
Absolutely.
So, why did you choose the change in lifestyle here for, in law?
So, I was at a law firm for six years and then at DOJ for three years, three plus, and it was a tough lifestyle, a lot of work at the firm, I had just incredible pressure on producing billable hours and then DOJ, I traveled quite a bit and when, we had a 20-month-old and then twins about a year after I started at DOJ. So, it was, I was traveling twice a month, it was very hard. It was very hard on my wife, as she will tell you. And so, opportunity, I spoke with my father and said, well, why don't we slow down the pace a little bit and DOJ, I was taking people's houses and now I help people buy houses, so it's, it's much, much more enjoyable. And so, I came back to Western Mass for the slower pace of life and the better work-life balance.
Good. Well, we welcome you to Long Meadow. Do you want to call your meeting to order now that you have a call?
I called the Select Board meeting for January 6th to order.
Mark, good evening. Since this is a, Mark Strange, as you might know, is the planner for the city of Agawon. I don't know if you have any planning-esque questions you have for the applicant?
I don't, so we only have one applicant tonight?
We have one applicant, yes, sir.
Right, I don't want to duplicate what was already...
Well, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm not sure if you realize, have you been following the Tennessee gas pipeline issue?
Yes.
And that the bylaw passed, so that is going to be in front of the planning, that's the, instead of zoning, it's actually going to go in front of planning. Would you have any difficulty deciding that case if they follow all of the bylaws when they file their application, all the requirements of the bylaw?
And we got to town in kind of the middle of everything, so I, I believe I'm mostly up to speed on it, but I think the foremost duty of the, on the Planning Board is to follow the law and to follow the bylaw as it's written and I understand the, there was a bylaw that has been passed and that will, will guide that, so I would, to answer your question, I would need to be familiar with the new bylaw and the application, I would consider it as it's put before us, of course.
All right, thank you.
You're searching out a slower pace of life and then you're wanting to get involved in one of the committees that can hit the newspapers. Why would you like to serve?
I, I think it's civic duty is, it's important to, if you feel passionate about where you live and if you can help the town and guide the town and make it the best it can be, I think it's important and if you have the time to do it and if you have the wherewithal to do it, I think it's very important to get involved.
Okay, follow-up. What, what unique talents will you bring to the Planning Board?
I think as a practicing real estate attorney who deals with these issues, I can see perhaps the other side of the coin a little bit and maybe through our firm's practice, maybe can have some pointed questions that may not occur to a member who does not deal with this on a day-to-day basis. I think the practicing attorney's acumen for the digging a little deeper or taking a different angle of attack, I think could be important.
Okay, thank you.
How you doing?
Hi, Mark.
So, so on your, your application, it says that you have been practicing, you've practiced in front of other boards?
Right.
What boards have you been in front of?
Mostly my practice, just, I'm not sure how I got this niche practice, but I do a lot of liquor licensing, so in front of a lot of license commissions, select boards, so that's been quite a bit of that.
Have you done anything in, in Long Meadow?
Nothing in Long Meadow.
Okay. So, have you represented clients for, with respect to site plans or zone changes or anything of that nature in front of planning boards?
I have, I've not appeared except tangentially, I mostly leave that to the subject matter expert in my firm, my father, so, but I am, I am learning, we talk through things, but he's done most of the appearances.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the Select Board side?
No.
Thank you very much for applying, I really appreciate it and to get someone new to come in and especially what I'm seeing is it's going to be a very, a lot of works in front of the Planning Board the next few months and we're not just talking about Tennessee gas, but we're talking about a lot of other big projects that are going on in town and some new ones on the horizon, so I appreciate you stepping up with this sudden appearance and do you think that you would consider applying for the elected position in June?
I think I would, I'll have to get final approval after conversation with my wife, but I, hopefully, hopefully that would go fine, but yes.
Oh, good. Well, thank you.
Thank you. A motion, can I get a motion to adjourn the?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the special meeting with the Select Board.
And the Planning Board.
And the Planning Board. I'm sorry, I'm making a motion as the Planning Board member, but yes.
Okay, you have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
So, our next meeting, I believe, is on the 21st, which will be Tuesday, and that's when we will vote jointly on the decision on your case. We always have to wait a certain period of time, which I think is seven days before we can make a decision, so again, thank you very much for coming forward and for your family, too.
Thank you.
Marie, will you open the meeting as a joint meeting at 7:00 PM on the 21st?
Do you want 7:00 o'clock? I think that's what we decided.
Yeah, I think that's perfectly fine.
Sounds good, yeah, we'll start at 7:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
So, you came just in time to get the important stuff in.
Are we not meeting Wednesday? Do we not have a meeting?
No, this Wednesday? No.
Oh, how I got in my head.
Because it was originally, I said, let's do it Wednesday and then they said, no, we can't, so that's why. So, we can go straight into our meeting, wait till Lynn comes back.
Are we going to announce that we've got to go by 15 or are we just going to go ahead and push it?
I say we go ahead and go through.
We don't have any other time sensitive material?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Let me get it. Lynn's, this will be just a few minutes, the town manager has a new way that we're going to approach our meetings and she's trying to get it up on the board. Oh, well, we could do it. We always have trouble with the plug.
Yeah, and so we ordered a wireless, because on the town size, we don't use Macs.
Uh-huh.
So, this is set for a Mac.
Right.
We ordered a wireless Windows receiver, is telling me what the network was or how to access it yet.
Oh, can you use an iPhone?
Well, I was thinking that, too, since it's now all, I don't know.
But it's got a transmit from, do you have it on your iPhone?
I should be able to possibly do that.
Yeah, because that should work if it's on the iPhone.
If you want to see where our materials are now, you go to longmeadow.org, you go down to the calendar and on the calendar, you'll find an actual link, which will have not only the agenda, but all the materials. If my computer will. So, did you follow that, Mark? Because with the link that came from Debbie wasn't the full agenda. We had to go, because I didn't know that until I checked with Lynn and then I found it on the website.
Oh, no, okay, so I've been checking the email.
Yeah, that's what I did, too, and then I realized this afternoon that wasn't where it was going to be. And now my thing won't boot up. Are you guys having trouble getting on the website?
One computer worked fine, the other one's problematic. My, my Apple's working, my Samsung didn't seem going to work on it.
I was able to get in.
So, I might have to lean over and look at your agenda, because mine's not popping up.
I think it says open meeting and then, and it looks like we adjourned. Marie's not listening, she...
You mean, we, oh, I know where you're going with things. Here we go. There, I got it.
It is, it is a pretty abbreviated thing anyway, Marie.
Yeah, it is.
I think town manager's holding this up right now.
We can start, I, I'll have this working for the next meeting. At least this one is a smaller agenda, but...
Oh, yeah, it's a tiny little thing.
Yeah, so, why don't we start? Do you have any announcements, Lynn?
I do, I actually have.
Do you think we have to hold off?
Yeah, that might be, we don't have any, any, anybody showed up and there's no items that are time-sensitive, it's a reason we're wondering.
Yeah, it's not like you're going to be out of here by 7:00, so I can't see why you can't, but...
We'll leave the resident comments for 7:00, in case somebody comes.
I'm sorry, so the decision was to start? Okay. Okay, so, yes, I have announcements.
It should only be one.
What'd you say?
I think, I don't know, that's part of your announcements?
Oh, yeah.
It shouldn't be, I think it's one, not one or two.
Okay.
Sorry.
Oh.
It's according to the meeting.
So, just a couple reminders that the trash amnesty ends this week on Friday, the 10th. You can place an extra bag with your trash and recycling this week free of charge. As Marie mentioned, there's a new format for Select Board agendas. These are interactive agendas now, so all the documents that you will be hearing the Select Board discuss will be linked right on the agenda for everyone to access at the same time. In future meetings, they will also be projected on the screen so you could follow along if you're in the audience here at the meeting or watching it on TV at home. The Senior Housing Task Force applications are still accepted until January 15th. As of last check, there were three and we need a fourth member of the public, so if you have any interest in serving, definitely fill out an application online or stop by the office to fill one out. And the streetlights were previously owned and maintained by Eversource, they're now owned and maintained by the town of Long Meadow. If you have an issue that you need to report regarding a streetlight, you can notify the Department of Public Works through the online form on their website or you can call the DPW at 567-3400 or send them an email at publicworks@longmeadow.org. Daigle Electric's been contracted with to provide maintenance of the town-owned streetlights, so if you see them out and about in town, that's what they're doing and that's what I had for announcements.
So, you're going to have all the agenda and all the documents be up on the screen live then, as we move along?
Yes.
And it's a homeowner, they could sit with their iPad or whatever in front of them, punch up the interactive items and see what we're discussing?
Yes, exactly.
Is it going to be any limitations? How about your, your Big 36 prints and all that kind of stuff? Are there any limitations you can sense?
Shouldn't, shouldn't be.
Okay.
Yep. The only items that wouldn't be up there would be executive session material or, yeah, anything that would fall under an exemption.
How about presentations that people come in and make? Are they going to be requested to get them to you much earlier so you can get them put in a format and get them on?
That would be the goal, yes.
Okay.
I would like to try to have anything that's coming in front of you at a meeting available to the public 48 hours before and projected on the screen.
Good. Lynn, did Kathleen Lingenberg get her application in for the Senior Task Force?
I haven't seen the names, it sounds like, no.
Oh, okay. No, that's disappointing. And what about, did Eleanor get hers in? Eleanor Cress?
Um, no, it's Cress, I'm not sure.
Okay. Just because she said that she wanted to be part of it, but she hadn't gotten her application in.
And bringing that up, what you're doing with the applications are fabulous, too. It's, it's really streamlining that.
Is that under my report?
It might be, so I might be taking...
Yep, that's okay.
Do you want to go ahead and tell us about your report and the streamlining of that? The communication, she was just doing some fabulous things with the website.
Thanks. So, there's now an online board committee or commission application, so you won't have to download a form and print it out and then scan it or mail it in, you can just complete it right online by entering all your information in and you can just hit submit and it will send the application directly to Debbie and it's all the same information that we would receive if you had downloaded it or stopped in the office to pick one up. If you would like to download it or stop in and pick one up, you are certainly welcome to do that, we will maintain that method as well.
In regards to that, any openings on any boards or committees, just pull it anytime. We don't, we're, I'm not waiting quarterly, I know it's been done in the past. Great. But if anyone wants to fill a position, they've just moved in town or they've just suddenly decided they have a little free time, just go ahead and look up, because there's still some great positions opening in some of the various committees and boards.
You know, I agree with you.
Yeah.
I thought the same thing, that, you know, not all select members agree doing that.
Yeah.
We've got a lot of, it'd be nice if we put the policy together this time and put in a policy of what we're going to do, because I fully agree with you, if we got a committee opening and somebody wants, let's get them on.
Yeah.
But there was other times, we waited four and five months.
Right.
Has a chilling effect.
Yeah, and it was, it was, it was, it was power play and it wasn't right.
Well, we have to do it before people realize it changed their minds. They had too much time to accept something else. That's right.
Great. And so, moving on in my report, which is also available, linked on the agenda if you're following, over the next few weeks, I'm going to be working to convene meetings with regional town managers and town administrators in the neighboring communities. There are many opportunities to work together on initiatives that could share each or provide, that could save each community money, I'm sorry, there's a typo, while increasing or enhancing services and I think we've seen this with Westcom and I expect that will continue in these efforts in other areas of municipal management. The FY 2021 budget, departments have submitted their budgets for FY 21, going to be working with the Finance Director and the individual departments in the coming weeks to review the submissions and get them ready to prepare to submit to the to review the submissions and get them ready to prepare to submit to the select board in February. I had to add a couple other items, just I wanted to provide an update on. After I completed my report, there were three other things that came in this, actually today, that I felt were important, and I didn't want to wait to provide updates on. Today, I received a letter of intent to retire from Chief Stankowitz. This will be within the next 90 days. And just in my very short time here in Long Meadow, he's been a wealth of knowledge and helped immensely to make my transition smooth. So I want to wish him the best of luck in his future endeavors and thank him for his 37 years of service to the town and its citizens, and that I am going to be laying out a recruitment process to fill this critical leadership role. And so more information on that will be available very soon. Governor Baker's supplemental state budget was recently approved by the legislature. Today, we found out that we received additional Chapter 90 money of $47,836. The supplemental funding will need to be appropriated at the annual town meeting before expenditures can be made. And steel began going up at the new DPW facility on Friday at 2:00. They worked all day Saturday, Sunday, and they were there on site again today. I actually stopped by and took some photos, and it's pretty impressive to see it taking shape. And so we'll be posting some of those on the website and Facebook soon, if residents can't get by to look at it themselves.
I have one question, excuse me, one question. Do you, is there any outreach opportunities for, like, the town of Enfield for partnerships? We're so close, just across the border, is there anything that you've ran into that we can do interstate instead of reach town?
I would imagine that there are. I think the MOU process might be a little bit different, so I'm not entirely sure yet. But I would think with our proximity, there certainly would be many cases that we could share certain things. But other things may be more challenging, just based on their structure, their state laws.
Right. Paul, isn't there something on the water system?
I'm not, there is something on the water system, should we lose our supply from Springfield? I believe we can tie into Enfield somehow. The other thing, too, is where the residents had their road graded. It's a Long Meadow Road behind, that runs behind the grapevine.
Right.
It's a Long Meadow Road, but those are Enfield residents that we agreed that they would, Enfield would continue to plow it.
Okay.
But we had graded it, we would grade it once a year. So there is an agreement that we worked out with them on that particular case. So there's opportunity there. I have the town manager's card, Lynn, in my office that I could share with you. And he was very open and receptive of additional talks.
That's good.
When we had met in the, in the fall.
Yeah, I mean, we're so close.
Right.
Right. Okay, how about the, that's for another discussion.
Well, actually, we're, as Paul said, they were very open to wanting to do more things. The water, look at where our MOUs, is it written down on the water issue? So there is, remember, I sent out the email that we're having a special reception for Lynn and inviting some of the local organizations, and we've also invited the Enfield mayor and town manager. So there'll be a chance for the select board also to really talk to them and get to know our neighbors in the South.
Right. Yeah, because I keep thinking about that one sewage line that we have that goes across the river.
Yeah.
Only one. Someday. And no redundancy.
I think, I want to say I'm thrilled with the reports you've been giving, Lynn. They've really been great, not just your town manager reports, but the end of the week, you give us that update on what's going on, which is fabulous. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, yeah, they're being quite lengthy.
Also, you've been reaching out, like you wrote that article for the reminder, and I know that town manager did that again last year, but it's really nice to reach out to the public in general. So I really appreciate all the new things you've been putting in and the new reports you've been giving us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anything you, questions you have for Lynn in regards to things that are happening lately? No?
I know change can be hard with your agendas especially, so I appreciate the willingness to give it a try. I think over time, you'll see that it maybe is a little easier, and you might start using them as a resource to be able to point people to that specific agenda, because the document's right there. So it should hopefully be less work for you.
I can tell you, it is better right now, because this, I've had a lot of difficulty bringing up the different pieces, and this was flawless tonight. Everything's come up wonderful, so that's great.
It was cumbersome beforehand, because you had different windows open and out, much easier.
Great. The best thing was, there's no cost, because it was already built into the site.
And it was extra work, Debbie, so thank you for working to change up the system with her.
You're welcome.
Oh, good. And I think when people go back and they say, where is this document? I used to have to say, well, you look for the package that's attached to that agenda, but we don't have to do that now. It'll all just be easy for them to pick up and pull out, which is great.
Great.
But they now have to give you a Mac or an iPad.
They're going to make this work for the town side.
They will?
Yeah.
And that brings up another thing, IT. Have you started to decide when you're going to sit down with them and work on the MOU?
We've been sharing some emails back and forth, so we haven't set a full date yet, but I imagine it'll be in the next two weeks.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question that wasn't necessarily brought up? So some people have been asking me how long they have to put their trees, Christmas trees, on the street? Do we have a, do we know how long this?
I don't know that exact date.
I think it usually is, isn't it like the second or third week in January because of the 12 days?
It could be posted on the DPW website.
All right, now let me get to, so it's after 7:00, and resident comments, none. Select board comments? Any select board comments? No, I think the only thing I want to say is I received a email from a school committee member about the, they had a robotics thing last Saturday, which I couldn't attend, which is really exciting to see. I know East Long Meadow had had one for a long time, but I'm excited to see that up and working for the high school. They might have done it before, but it was the first time I received information on it, which was nice. And it would also be wonderful to share more of what we get with the school committee and what the school committee gets on their agenda. If you could try to find a way to start sliding that back and forth.
I will have more information on that on Friday, by Friday.
Okay, that'd be great. I used to try to always send, when there was something important, to send it to the chair of the school committee, but if they could just automatically get our agendas sent, so they, since you have it all embedded, it would be perfect, because they can always find anything they want every single week. Any other select board comments or questions? All right, why don't we just go straight into old business? Approval of the minutes of December 16th, were both of you there? Can we do it?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes of the December 16th meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Then we have to start appointing for the, oh, that's not what I was given here. These are the terms that are expiring. Don't we have some appointments that we need to make? Oh, here it is, I found it, okay. So the first is, we need to put a three-year term expiring June 2020 for the Cable Advisory Committee. Is there a motion to approve Paul Gorman?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, now a three-year term expiring June 2022, capital planning, Adam Mensch. Is there?
Motion to approve Adam Mesh.
Mesh.
Second.
All those in favor? Is there a motion to approve for Council on Aging Board of Directors, three-year term expiring June 2022 for Jan Camasco?
You'd do better than I did.
Motion to approve Jan Camasco for the Council on Aging Board of Director.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, is there a motion to approve for Energy Sustainability Committee, three-year term expiring June 2022 for Stephen Morantz?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, thank you. All right, moving on to, let's see. To get back to my agenda.
There was, you were on comments for a select board?
Yes.
There was, it's not really anything to do with us. I found out something pretty neat over the weekend. Had some people come in out of Florida and stop and visit one of my niece and her children. And apparently, the state of Florida, across the entire state now, has virtual high school.
Oh.
And the kids basically are online at home for four to five hours a day, and their lectures are all there, and it's unbelievable across, and it's across the entire state. And it's, I feel it's 150, 200,000 kids enrolled in the thing in all the different levels. It's quite a, quite an advance, and you can go back and watch lectures and, and they've been in, I guess, for about a year now, and they're just raving about it. Because it allows a person who, say, was injured to stay at home and not lose any school, keep going. Allows some students that want to work the opportunity, like, the kid was online, was a professor, and took a test at 7:00 at night when they were up in Boston. It was kind of unique, so I wonder if it'll eventually spread across, but the state of Florida is quite progressive on that.
Yeah, that's interesting, yeah.
That's for the what it's worth department.
Well, something will tell the school committee.
Yeah.
I think there might be something that's sort of like that, an online high school, but I don't think it's, I think it's almost like a charter school.
Yeah.
That some of the foreign students are starting to do.
And this is across the state, and of course, they, apparently, most of the instructors, for some reason, are located in the Orlando area. And they didn't know why, but there's a lot of professionals have moved to the Orlando area and have it set up in their homes. So, I mean, it's wonderful for teachers, too.
Oh, yeah.
Everything's right there at their homes. And as I say, being able to get in touch with your teacher on the weekend to take a test, which was kind of neat, too.
All right, so then we're going to move on to old business charter changes, review, discussion, and update. So we had all of these charter reviews that we were trying to vote our way through and get on the Springtown meeting. I made a point of not putting any in the Falltown meeting, because the Falltown meeting was such a heavy burden as it was. A lot of lifting had to occur, and we were shorthanded. But we need to start setting up what we're going to be doing for the Springtown meeting. Is there any idea on how we want to approach the rest of this? Because we took the easy things, now it's going to be the tough things, like the building committee, some of the capital planning audit, some of these changes. Now, I know you pulled these up, Lynn, and this is your first time really viewing this. I'm not sure if you had a way you wanted to approach this first? Did you want to review these and make your recommendations on top of it before we vote them through to get on to the Springtown meeting? Or did you want us, as a, to form a subcommittee to try to move this along?
I'm not sure that there's, I guess if there were a subcommittee formed, it would need to be pretty quick. I haven't really given it too much thought yet.
Why don't we start with the next meeting, why don't you pick out two items that you're going to consider? Send those to the select boards, so we'll know we're going to be discussing those two. So maybe we'll just take it one bite at a time.
Sure.
And then we'll see how that rolls with the full board. Mark, Richard, do you have something that you feel you want us to have on the first two items? I know the last two items, we sort of dropped the ball on, were capital and building.
Yeah.
Do you want to take those two together? Or do you think those are too big to handle?
Well, they, they kind of hold hands. I mean, the two are pretty close in relationship to our community.
So what is the, I'm being new to this, what exactly is the process? So the Charter Review Committee came up with these recommendations. So what's the next step, or what's our charge?
Our charge is, too, if we accept the recommendations, or if we change them a little bit, then we have to vote on it and then say, yes, this is what we want to go in front of the town. The town has to vote on them.
Okay.
And so what we did was we cherry picked the easy stuff, and then we said, okay, now we've got to go into the stuff that we really have to make some big decisions on. I think that one of, unless you guys want to do appointments, because I know that that's something that seems to be bothering. Should we look at the appointment process and see if we want to make changes on that? Or should we just stick to capital and building?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a little bit momentum there, I wouldn't, and those are two important committees, I think, which is, which is true.
All right. All right, so Lynn, would that be possible for us, too? And if you find you've just got too much on your plate, you want to push it out another meeting, but we'll put those as our next two?
Yep.
Okay, great. And then the next thing I wanted us to start getting back into the system, which is, we have to review our policies, because they're so outdated, and they're not, they don't reflect what we do. And my understanding is, when Paul talked to Moody and to Standard &amp; Poor, they really like us having policies that we stick to in the financial policies. And one of them, we might need to readjust is the OPEB.
Right.
Because we're making changes in that, and we have to be consistent. So should we do the same thing with the charter that we're doing with the policies, grab two per meeting to try to move it forward? Or do you feel that we need to have a, a subcommittee to decide on what we're doing next? Or just keep biting, taking a bite of the elephant? What do you guys think?
I say take the bite of the elephant. We don't need any more subcommittees.
Okay, all right.
They just slowed the process down. We've had a discussion on this before, on a schedule of policy reviews, and it's very important we do review them, but there's so many, it'd be hard to do it every year. So it might be nice to look at it in, what is our cycle? What is it, a three-year total review of everything, and then you take one-third, one-third, one-third? And what's reasonable to give an honest review instead of just a rubber stamping? And that, that might be part.
Oh, I was just waiting my turn to talk, that's all.
Oh, and that may be something that we refer to the town manager and to the CFO to say, what are other communities doing, what's reasonable? Because they're, they're going to pick up the workload if we start changing these things anyway. So I think it'd be, take the direction that they're going to provide.
I mean, minimally, I would say that when it comes to the financial policies, I'd be happy to go through those, address the ones that this board has already had discussions on, the OPEB. We talked about a policy for funding the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, and then some of those other policies that say it'll be reviewed every three years, but when you look at it, it's five or six or seven years. I don't mind going through those and taking the first glance at those and bringing it to your attention.
Well, I think those are the ones that are the most crucial, are financial. So if you would start that, and then push towards our agenda, which ones you're ready for us to talk about, we'll leave that to you direct the flow. One of the things I was thinking is, there's a policy also on street lighting.
Yes.
So that might need to be changed, because the changes that we're making there, too. But I guess you, you were reviewing them, and you saw there's a lot of problems.
Yeah, I flagged a lot of areas.
There's a lot of red over there.
And I was wondering how you wanted to tackle them, yeah. Whether you wanted to take a whole approach and, you know, revive the whole thing, or do them one by one, but.
Would this just have to be a select board vote?
Yeah, I think it's, we have to vote on these, because they're, they're select.
Yeah, they're policies of this board.
Yeah, so you decide, if you find five you want to push into the next agenda, whatever flow you want, we'll leave you and Paul to decide the amount that comes to us. But I just, I don't want, I want us to do it on a regular basis, so we just don't drop the ball like we've done before in the past. We get overwhelmed with other projects, and then we don't clean up our house.
Yep.
All right, that's great, so I just wanted those two on the agenda, so we can move forward on that. New business is we have to set the annual town election date. So when am I going to be off? What's the date?
I thought you were taking out papers. You could go there tomorrow if you, if you set the dates today.
Well, there's going to be a lot of terms expiring, my terms expiring, I see school committee. There's three, three, three places that are coming up, planning board. We have, well, we actually have two, because there's the one five-year term, and then the one we're just voting to replace is coming up again, because this replacement that we voted on or will vote on is only until the next election. Housing authority, we have two places that are possibly vacant for. So there's a lot of elections coming up. So the proposal here is preliminary ele- So the proposal here is preliminary election if needed of April 28th, annual town election June 16th, and nomination papers available January 7th, oh, it is tomorrow, to the public as long as we set the date tonight. So is there a motion to set the preliminary election for April 28th, 2020, for the preliminary and the annual for June 16th, 2020?
So moved. Yeah, second.
Any further discussion?
I have the, the nomination papers, and then you've got different nomination things up in here. We're going to open them up on January 7th?
That's what it says.
Yeah. Yeah, because I mean, they're not closing until March 6th. Well, I guess that's, yeah, that's two months. Isn't that a lot longer than we normally do it?
Probably a little bit earlier than we normally do it.
That's what I mean, earlier.
But I, I mean, there's no reason not to open it.
Okay. Yeah, there isn't. I can't, unless it places a burden on some of the staff that...
My guess is, starting earlier makes it easier, because it's a presidential election year, and the primary is going to be intense.
Yeah.
So I'm imagining she would like most of the bulk of that done prior, but I didn't speak with her, but I'm just guessing.
Yeah, good guess.
So, okay, so all those in favor? And so this will be posted on the website, so that people can see when they pull papers, when they're due, when the certifications are due, and everything like that, and absentee ballots, and last date of register.
And then, and then you're having the party on the 16th?
Yeah. Oh, but I'll, I'll come in front of you and irritate you on the other side of the table. That's all right. All right, so then, the...
This new web format is great.
Oh, it really is.
I mean, you can't believe, because before I couldn't find the documents, couldn't bring them up. I mean, they're right here, this is beautiful.
But that's the problem. Richard now will have everything right. There'll be no hesitancy.
They will make our meetings flow nicer, too.
There's two letters, correspondence, I wanted to point out to the board. One is that PVTA letter. Mark has been the representative for the PT, PTV, PVTA, but your task force is talking about transportation, too, so you might want to keep an eye on everything that's going through there and talk to Mark about the changes. I know they keep cutting back on our service and increasing our share. And if we're going to be doing something else, and there's also all sorts of grant money out there if we end up doing anything extra. The other thing is Senator Warren also sent us a letter in regards to the Tennessee Gas Pipeline. Did everyone get that and read that? I thought that was very interesting. And so that's also part of the packet. Any updates on Task Force Wool Swamp? What's going on? Everything going all right with that? Mark?
We have a meeting, it just got scheduled for January 27th. January 27th, we're going to review the new designs, conceptual designs. Malone and McBroom put together some additional designs, and then hopefully we can, as a task force, we can decide on what we want.
That's great.
Yep.
And I don't think we have a tax ceiling task force date up yet.
No, the one in December was canceled. I don't recall there being one set yet.
Yeah. So that's still out there. And then we've got, how, what's Scantic Valley? Anything coming up with Scantic?
Scantic Valley meets in early February, and they'll be talking about setting rates. So it's probably an important one for Tom, I believe is the liaison to attend, I believe is on Lynn's agenda already. But that's in, I believe, the earlier part or, in February, though, so.
Oh, so Lynn, you might be going to that meeting?
Yes, it's on my calendar.
Okay, that's great. And what about the Pension Board? Anything coming up with the Pension Board?
They sent us our FY 21 assessment.
Oh, what's that? What's it, eight and a half?
I think it was closer to 10.
Ah! Oh, no.
Yeah.
Wow.
What does that mean?
That hurts our budget.
Yes, it does hurt our budget. We've been, but if you look at the historical trend, we were, we were under, under, under all the time. FY 21, I'm sorry, FY 20 is where we based the FY 21 projection on. That was a 52.4-week year, as opposed to FY, the prior year, FY 19 was a 52-week, so there was a big jump just because of that. It's almost a, it's almost a 1%. It's like .77, but that added to the added estimated payroll that's going to be attributable to retirement, so that was some of the factor. I looked at the calculation made. Everything seemed to be on target. We made the calculation back in September, or back in October. We used a September 30th snapshot. Everything seemed to be done correctly, and, you know, in the prior years, maybe we just, because we do take a snapshot as of September 30th, you know, I could say we might have had vacancies on that, those payrolls that were just worked to our advantage, and it wasn't the case this, this fiscal year when we took it. But it did go up, I think it's like 10%.
But didn't we have a vacancy in the town manager slot?
Um, yeah, yeah, you did.
What was the lag time between Stephen and Jay?
Well, Stephen was off the payroll, so there, there was no one participating at that point in time. Yeah, that would have been off.
Yeah, so why we see, go back, check their numbers. Because as Mark said, how big is the hit? If we were expecting eight and a half and we were 10?
Um, boy, I, I forget the exact numbers.
That could be, is that 100,000?
It, it's probably 100,000, but looking at prior year's budgets, it's, it's not 100,000 when you look at the, the incremental amount from what was estimated to what, to what I have now going into the budget. It might only be like $60,000. So some of the hit was absorbed because we had excess funds in the account in prior years. So we'll just keep our fingers crossed that Scantic Valley doesn't get hit with something to the same nature, because usually it's nice if they can offset each other. But, yeah, that, the assessment did come in around the first of the year.
Yeah, because I'm surprised, because for, our total salary, I know went down last year, the last time we gave one, but that might have been because we were down a week.
It could have been down nearly a week, and like I said, the, if we had vacancies in certain positions of a year ago, I don't recall, it was September 2000.
Right, we'd also rolled out the, dispatchers had started to leave the system.
No, no, those dispatchers were on our payroll on the 30th.
Oh, they were?
Yes, they were. They will be off next year, but they were on our payroll on the 30th of September. I mean, we did have a vacancy in the town engineer, but again, I don't recall what it was in September 30th of 2018. You know, I know there were quite a few vacancies in, in the fire, recent fire was, had a lot of attrition during those, those years. I can't think of any other, you know, large ticket items that would have been vacant at the time, but, but it was, it didn't work to our advantage, just here, let me just say that.
Okay. All right, so we'll hold our breath for Scantic Valley. All right, anything else people want to report? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?